The annual town meeting now reconvenes and we will pick up where we left off, which was Article Number 14. We'll let Mrs. -- we'll let the article be presented and speak.
Okay. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $700,000 to fund the design and consulting services to establish the prioritization plan for PFAS mitigation in the town's public drinking water supply and any and all costs incidental or related thereto. And to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $700,000 from water retained earnings, said funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager. The Select Board, the Finance Committee, and Fiscal Advisory were all unanimous in their support.
Second.
Mr. Gittard is going to present Article 14, and he's going to speak to Article 15 at the same time. While we'd be voting Article 15 separately, and there may be separate discussion about Article 15, they both deal with PFAS mitigation, and I think it will make the most sense to have it presented all at once. So, please.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Yeah, my name is Fernando Gittard, and I'm here on behalf of representing the Select Board in sharing with you the two articles, Articles 14 and 15, the reasoning behind it and why we have recommended to recommend both articles positively. So, in this presentation, I'll cover briefly what PFAS is and why this chemical is regulated; second, the regulations themselves, both current and proposed, and the potential impact this will have on our drinking water supply; finally, the steps we're recommending that we take as a town to address and mitigate the impact. So first of all, what are PFAS? Actually, PFAS is an acronym for, I'll get this right, hopefully, per and polyfluoroalkyl substances, PFAS, right? You can see it there. It's a, these are man-made chemicals, class of over 14,000 compounds, and they're used in consumer products since the 1950s. They are everywhere, wherever you want to have a non-stick or repellent properties. For example, and this is a good one, microwave popcorn, right? So the PFAS coats the inner paper bag that prevents the oil from seeping out when it's in the microwave and prevents the popcorn from sticking to the bag. Have you ever wondered why water just runs off your Gore-Tex jacket or your car after going through a car wash? How your waterproof mascara works? PFAS is behind all of that.
Uh-oh.
Yes, sir. All that class of PFAS chemicals, PFOA and PFOS, were most extensively produced and are no longer manufactured in the U.S. But because of their useful properties, which I've outlined above, they have been superseded by what they call Gen X chemicals, a replacement for PFOA, and PFBS, a replacement for PFOS. So what's the issue with these useful and pervasive chemicals? They resist degradation, they accumulate in the environment, and they're also, they are known as forever chemicals and have recently emerged as common drinking water pollutants. Next slide, please. There's also enough data out there that these forever chemicals are a health hazard. In 2016, the EPA issued a drinking water health advisory limit of 70 parts per trillion for PFOA and PFOS. Massachusetts went a step further and in October 2020 issued an enforceable maximum contaminant level, or MCL, of 20 parts per trillion for the six PFAS compounds, of which two are PFOA and PFOS. In June 2022, the EPA issued an updated drinking water health advisory limit of essentially non-detect, i.e. you shouldn't have any PFOA or PFOS in your drinking water. That's the health advisory. And in March 2023, EPA proposed draft federal enforceable regulations, or MCLs, of four parts per trillion for PFOA and PFOS. So in December of last year, this new rule was submitted for inter-agency review to the White House Office of Management and Budget, with expected issue of the final federal standards for PFOA and PFOS in April, May timeframe of this year. Next slide, please. So what impact would this new regulation have on the U.S. and on Massachusetts? As you can see, significant. There are present only three technologies available to remove PFOA and PFOS from drinking water. The first is granular activated carbon, the second is ion exchange treatment, and lastly, high-pressure membranes. But high-pressure membranes are best suited what they call single point of entry at a home or a building. So essentially, there's only two products that can be used in public water supplies to remove PFOA and PFOS. And so when the expected regulations come into force, demands, you can just imagine the demand for the vessels, filter media, and associated equipment, and contractors will stress supply chain and drive up costs. Next slide. So what impact would the new regulations have in our drinking water supply here in Duxbury? Again, significant. The table there shows the current levels of PFOA and PFOS in our 12 drinking water source wells. With the current Massachusetts enforceable MCL of 20 parts per trillion for PFAS 6, only the parting well is impacted, only one well, and that well has been shut in and not a drinking water source since the PFAS 6 chemicals were first detected. With the proposed federal enforceable MCL of four parts per trillion for PFOA and PFAS, an additional five wells will be impacted, shut in and not a drinking source. If we do nothing, that leaves us with six drinking water wells with a daily capacity of about 4 million gallons per day. And you can imagine, in the summer, we all start using our sprinklers.
Oh!
Peak demand is 3.9 million gallons per day. So we will not have any spare capacity at peak demand. So if we need to do any maintenance, or any of these wells fail, or any of the six wells that we have fail, then we'll be forced to take action that will have an impact on our community. We will have to ration water, drinking water. So what are we going to do about it? Next slide, please. So based on the information that we have at hand, and in discussions with representatives from EPA and MasPEP, bottom line, we have to act. One article is the first step. The article covers the conceptual design to determine the potential project costs to install and operate a PFAS treatment facility at each of the well sites, as well as groundwater modeling to support prioritizing which well we should go to first, and more importantly, a project manager to oversee all this work. That is key. DPW staff are focused on day-to-day operations. To get this done in the timeframe we have, a dedicated project manager is essential. Total request for appropriation for this article is $700,000. The second article, Article 15, next slide, please, is outlined as follows, right? So once we get the conceptual design for well-specific treatment facility, and that first prioritized well identified, this article will fund the design and permitting services for that drinking water well. But most importantly, this article gives us ability to move quickly, to proactively seek federal and state funding to cover project costs, to engage with contractors necessary to purchase and construct, in other words, to be ahead of the game. The total request for appropriation is $1 million. The question is, and it has been raised and has been discussed, why not wait until we definitely know what the EPA's enforceable maximum contaminant level is? Maybe there's a pushback from the OMB. Maybe it's higher than the proposed four parts per trillion. Maybe the OMB sends it back to the EPA to do some more work and takes longer to finalize. Let's wait until we know. We can always call a special town meeting or hold off until the next annual town meeting. Yes, normally, the Select Board would agree with that approach, but in this case, when it's all about our ability to supply drinking water that meets standards and regulations, we're recommending that we appropriate now. Why? Appropriation gives the Select Board permission to spend money. It does not mean that we must. It gives us the ability to act. In other words, as soon as we know the outcome of the EPA's final regulations, in May, July, September, or whenever, we can start spending money towards PFAS mitigation as outlined in Article 15, based on the information provided by Article 14. In conclusion, Article 14 and Article 15 gives the Select Board the ability to start and act in a timely manner to address and mitigate PFAS contamination in our drinking water supply. Thank you for listening, and your vote in support of these two articles will be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay.
So, do we have any questions or concerns about Article 14? And we'll deal with Article 15 separately. Thank you. Please.
126 Lake Shore Drive. And I have to tell you that I've been concerned about our water for almost 20 years, and having three family members, one twice with cancer. I have questioned this, and they said the pipes were fine, but that didn't mean the water was fine. And our well is the third highest on your list there. So I'm glad to see finally someone's taken advantage of this and looking at it, and I think, please, support this. As a hospice nurse, not only did I see almost at least 15 people I know that have been either lived on Lake Shore and left, passed away from cancer, including children, I please do something with the water, because this is more important than anything, because you need air and water, and this is really an important issue, so please support it.
Thank you.
Mark McDevitt, Chestnut Street. One figure that was not shown on the slides was potential cost for one of these rehabilitation systems. The Clipper at one point had referenced close to $100 million for such purification of the water, and wondering how that figures into the costs of these preliminary estimates for design, et cetera. And the second thing I would ask is, there's a lot of information coming out these days about nano-plastics, which will be the next one, that will have to be contained in our water, and will this new system deal with that? Thank you.
Mr. Gittard?
Yes, so basically, this is just the start. If and when this enforceable regulations of four parts per trillion come in, we will need to address and provide PFAS mitigation filtration systems, facilities at all our wells to be able to maintain the capacity that we need to supply drinking water. So yes, cost range between 60 to 100 million dollars to cover all our wells in the future. The good thing is that, what I'll do is, I'll hand over to Ryan Trahan, who's working with us, that'll provide a little bit more detail as to what help we can get to, for sources of funding to help us with that. Plus also, when we look at each of the wells and the sources and the contaminants that we have, it's not just PFAS, but there's iron and manganese, and so the treatment design will take care of those chemicals as well. And so maybe you may be able to answer a question about microplastics and how they impact or will be removed by the filter media.
Brian, I didn't catch your last name.
Tran.
Tran. So, Mr. Tran, I believe you do not live in the town of Duxbury?
Excuse me?
You are not a resident of the town of Duxbury?
No, sir.
Then in that case, I'm going to ask, I'd like a motion to allow Brian to address town meeting. He is a consultant.
Engineer.
An engineer, to answer some questions the committee, the community has.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to allow him to speak and address town meeting. We're going to open voting here. If you'd like to give him permission, and I hope you do, it's, please vote 1. If you object, vote 2. And everybody wants to hear you, because we've got zero no and 90 yes. Don't disappoint us.
Great, thank you. A lot of pressure here. No, thank you. My name's Ryan Trahan. I'm a professional engineer in Massachusetts. I have over 20 years' experience in.
Who can't hear you?
My name is Ryan Trahan. I'm a professional engineer in Massachusetts. I work for Environmental Partners, and I have over 20 years of experience with municipal public water supply, treatment, and planning and construction. And just to, and I've also been working with the town of Duxbury for over 20 years in its water distribution systems, tanks, pump stations, and wells. To answer the first question about the overall cost, each well site has its own unique water quality, as you probably can see from the concentrations that were listed on the screen prior. Each well has different range of concentrations that we have to look at. Each well may also have iron and manganese present, different levels of pH. So all this is taken into account during this Article 14 process, where we're identifying and citing the type of treatment that would be required at each well location, and developing that prioritization plan to recommend which well would hold the biggest bang for the buck as that first step under Article 15. If, in what, depending on what is found at each well for water quality, generally, you have to take care of, say, treatment for iron and manganese prior to treatment for PFOS. If you don't, you can follow the media, and it can actually cause it to not work properly or to have to be replaced more frequently, causing additional operation and maintenance costs. So this, that can help identify which site to pursue first, and the expense of the type of treatment plant and the type of treatment needed for each of those sites. A total project cost of between 60 and 100 million dollars right now is a very high-level estimate until we can do that first understanding and first study to understand what type of treatment and what we would be dealing with at each of the sites. There are different funding options to go along with this. I don't want to say luckily, but you might have heard of the infrastructure funding through the federal government. That is also taking place, and it's in its first year. That money is funneled through the, each state's state revolving fund, or what's called the SRF program. There's actually earmarked funding specifically for PFOS and emerging contaminants. That type of funding can receive a 0% interest loan, so it is advantageous to pursue that type of funding with the state when the time is, when the time is ready for that. The estimate, when Massachusetts first launched the PFAS 6 guidelines about four years ago, they also backed that up with grant programs as well, too, for helping out with design and permitting costs and other costs of planning. I would fully expect the state to come forward with that as well again, once the EPA initiates its rule, the rule's final, and then the state is therefore mandated to adopt the EPA regulation or do something more stringent. So Massachusetts could also come in and say, we would want, you know, two parts per trillion, not four. So the state cannot decide to do something that is less stringent than what EPA is proposing.
Do we have any other questions? Sir?
Hi, my name is Jim Begley. I'm a resident on Elm Street, and I'm with Duxbury Safe Water. I just have a comment. First of all, I want to thank the Select Board for their attention to this matter, and I want to thank you all for staying after lunch. You know, our water supply is a very valuable thing. It's an asset that we need to protect to make sure it's long-lasting into the future. Our health and the health of our families and our neighbors is a precious thing. We need to make sure that we protect our health and that of our neighbors. This contaminant in our water supply poses a threat to both of those things, the value of our water supply and our health. So I just want to ask everybody, please vote yes on these articles, Article 14 and 15. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, the woman in the back.
Thank you. Becky Chin, 42 Plantation Drive. I'm also a member of Duxbury Safe Water, and I have a short comment. I want to make sure you're aware that the PFAS chemicals, instead of degrading over time, stick around in the environment and in our bodies. And according to the EPA exposure to PFAS chemicals, even small amounts over time have been linked to serious health problems, including cancers, kidney, testicular, and added liver cancer, reduced vaccine response, childhood development delays, interfere with the body's natural hormones, increase cholesterol levels, affect the immune system, changes in the liver enzymes increase the risk of high blood pressure in pre-eclampsia in pregnant women, and small decreases in infant birth weights. The EPA is proposing that forever chemicals be categorized as hazardous substances, and I urge you to vote in favor of 14 and 15. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Melissa Rosenblatt. I'm 826 West Street. I serve on the Duxbury Board of Health and the PFAS Advisory Group, and like everyone else, I would like to ask for your support for these two items. Discussing PFAS has been a standing item for the Board of Health at every meeting, because we feel it is very important that we follow this issue and that we are proactive and do what we can to address this, not only because the costs are going to go up and supply chains and all of those other issues, but also because this is a pressing health issue for our community, and we feel that it's important to be proactive in addressing this. So I'd like to ask everybody to support these two articles. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we're ready for vote now. So we're going to vote on Article 14, $700,000 to fund the design and consulting services. We will vote on Article 15 and separately. So I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Article passes 103 to nothing, zero no votes. Now we will vote on Article 15. Article 15 is somewhat different than Article 14, although it addresses the same issue. But among other things, Article 15 is an authorization to borrow money. So when it comes time to vote, it will take a 2/3 vote for this to pass. I just mentioned that now. We'll remind you of that later when we vote.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $1 million for the design and permitting services for the priority project for PFAS mitigation in the town's public water supply, including all incidental and related expenses thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow $1 million under Chapter 44 of the general laws or any other enabling authority, such sum to be expended under the direction of the town manager, that the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to contract and expend any federal or state aid available for the project, and that the Select Board is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. Select Board voted 5-0 to recommend. Finance Committee voted 3-4 to not recommend. Fiscal Advisor voted 7-0 to recommend.
Second.
We have a vote in a second. Mr. Wyler, I believe you have some comments?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I rise just to explain the vote of the Finance Committee to all of you. The Finance Committee, as was previously stated, had a split vote on Article 15, not as it pertains to the reality of having to deal with PFAS, but rather a procedural concern over funding an article prior to a well-defined purpose. Article 14 provides funds to develop a plan that may not be available or completed until sometime in the first quarter of next year. The majority of the committee felt that it would be more appropriate to wait for that to be completed and then come to our next annual town meeting, or a special within the annual, in March of 2025 with the specifics. The minority of the committee voted to support based on the notion it would give the Select Board money to proceed immediately with the results of that plan. The vote was 3 in favor and 4 opposed. The Select Board and Fiscal Advisory both voted unanimously in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will commit on behalf of my fellow Select Board members, and basically, we will not spend that money unless we know what it is spending it on. That's our commitment. We will have it ready in our hip pocket to act immediately, once we know the final regulations, right? We won't spend the money beforehand. That's our commitment to you.
Gentlemen in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Robert Carpenter, Summer Street. I rise in support of the article, but I wanted to provide the meeting with some additional information. The town of Easton has been well ahead of this issue, and according to information available on their website, 2021, they spent $100,000 for design, was supplemented by an additional $300,000 of state grants and assistance, and then in subsequent year, they spent $9.2 million in 2022, and over the course of a year, constructed three treatment plants for the water in Easton. And I'll note, to 20 nanograms per liter, a higher contamination rate, which would not be acceptable to this town. So I only want to raise the question of the means of estimation of these costs. It appears to be a situation where we are in a desperate need to act, and I would like to request greater transparency in terms of the basis of the estimates and further better understanding of what's going to happen between this $1 million and then the next increment of funding to actually accomplish the filtering of at least one well. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a great question. My firm actually was the design engineer consultant for the town of Easton, so I could speak to that very transparently. We were assisting the town of Easton right from the start of the PFAS 6 regulation, and they were impacted in a sense that they don't have as many well supplies as Duxbury does. I think they only had about three of the wells, three facilities that are treating four of the wells. The upwards cost of that total project is about what you've indicated, and we worked with them to help achieve some of those grants that I mentioned to help assist the town through the state. They decided not to go with the SRF funding, because the amount of the infrastructure funding that's funneling through the state revolving fund was not yet available yet for specific to PFOS, the amount of it. The cost of this, what was developed for the $1 million is, the PFOS treatment plants in Easton were very simple, were very simplistic. They were just granular activated carbons in a, just a large vertical building. There were minor improvements to the well station. In Duxbury's case, there are at least two of the well sites that require additional iron and manganese treatment in addition to PFOS. The cost of iron and manganese removal and facility can be almost two to three times the cost of PFOS, in addition to PFOS treatment. So, you know, as a reality, I think, a site, say, you could get a treatment for PFOS of, say, $4 to $5 million for one site. For that same site, in addition with iron and manganese treatment, you're looking at a much bigger facility and building, you'd be looking at $15 to $20 million for the same type of treatment.
Joanne Kingsley, Lake Shore Drive. I'm just curious to see the time span of this whole thing happening throughout all these wells, since there are several wells involved. Is there any kind of idea of like how many years this is going to be and how much more people will be affected because of the length of time that it may be, just a realistic idea?
Design would probably take one started. I'd say probably eight to 12 months with permitting. And again, it depends on which well supply is chosen first and if it would include iron and manganese treatment and PFAS treatment or just PFAS alone. But all in all, the reason behind the timing and the reasoning for Article 15 is to take that proactive approach to stay ahead. As soon as the EPA finalizes that rule and the state adopts it, they're typically given about three years to be in compliance. So we're trying to leverage that date as a goal to make sure that we have the facilities online before the town would be in violation.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. Article 14.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, I am sorry. I didn't turn the page. Article 15, it is the authorization of a million dollars to deal with the PFAS issue. We'll take a two-thirds vote for it to pass. And voting is now open. Voting is now closed. Motion passes 92 to 13. I sort of like it when we have such decidedly easy-to-understand votes. Article 16.
I move that the town authorize the select board to acquire a permanent access and utility easement in, on, and under a portion or portions of the property at 894 Tremont Street, identified by the assessors as parcel 108-815-001, and described more particularly in the certificate of title number 59991 filed with the Plymouth Registry District of the Land Court by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain on such terms and conditions as the select board deems appropriate. And further, to vote to appropriate the sum of $40,000 for the purpose of acquiring said easement and costs incidental or related thereto, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $40,000 from free cash, said funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager. Select board and finance committee voted unanimously to support.
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on Article 16. It is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, I'm sorry, we're now taking votes. Voting is closed. Motion passes 93 to three. Article 17, Mrs.
I move to indefinitely postpone this article.
Second.
Select board and finance committee unanimously support.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote to indefinitely postpone Article number 17. I'll ask for a vote on Article 17. Oh. He said he doesn't have already listed an indefinite postponement, so he's got to make that.
Are we waiting?
I think the votes have been so definitive, maybe we could do a voice vote on this. It is a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Called by the moderator, Article 18.
I move Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
And is there?
Select board and finance committee unanimously support it.
Second.
Is there some simple explanation of what it is? Thank you. Mrs. McKinnon will explain.
The purpose of Article 18 is to allow the town to adopt a new provision that has been made available that allows our treasurer to invest our trust funds as we invest all of our other funds. Prior to or not accepting this would require us to follow what's called a Massachusetts legal list. It's a very restrictive and outdated list of investments that are allowable for our trust funds. So what you're doing by accepting this statute is to allow our treasurer to invest with balancing safety, liquidity, and risk our trust funds as similarly as we invest all of our other funds.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote on Article 18. This is a majority vote. Voting is closed. Article passes 93 to one. Article 19.
Article 19. I move the Article 19 as printed in the warrant. The purpose of this article is to remove the revolving fund previously associated with the Rock as it is now an enterprise fund. Select board and finance committee voted unanimously to support.
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a vote on Article 19.
Oh, yay.
Voting is closed. Motion passes 89 to one.
Oh, sorry. Proposed amendment to the historic district bylaw, Chapter 12 of the general bylaws, by adding a new Section 12 dot 6 dot 3. I move Article 20 as printed in the warrant. The purpose of this amendment is to allow immediate repairs to town-owned buildings that are currently deemed a historic district.
And I would point out that this article was proposed by the Duxbury Local Historic District Commission. Any questions?
Hi, yes. Colleen Brer, Toby Garden Street. I'm just, you say the historic district requested this. I'm just curious. It seems strange to me that things don't move more slowly than two weeks. I don't think that, I mean, everything has to get approved, right? And there's a process. So I don't see the need to speed things up necessarily, but I also feel like it kind of defeats the purpose of our historic districts and kind of difficult to defend having them in the first place and getting other people to actually put their homes into the historic districts. So I didn't know if anybody could explain more why this is the case that we want to change it. Thank you.
Mr. Reed will respond.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This was debated at the, of course, Finance Committee and Select Board level. In fact, one of the board members brought up the questions that you just raised. Shouldn't the same bylaw provisions be applicable to town properties that are for residents? In this case, the residents have a choice, whereas the residents here would have a choice too through this action here at town meeting if they voted to put town buildings in a historic district. But any one of you living in a historic district now could choose to do so on your own volition. You don't need anybody else's approval or permission. Also, the private residences, they are totally voluntary. These are not. Town properties would be moved into a historic district, again, as I said, by the voters at town meeting. Further, the level of review for any work to be done on a town property is far greater than it is for private residents to wit. If we were to do any kind of work, proceed on any kind of work for a town building, for instance, the building I work in, Town Hall, just to paint it, first required obtaining quotes from the facilities department, bringing those quotes to fiscal advisory for them to review and decide if that's a good idea, then going to the Finance Committee to see if they vote to support the funding for that paint job, and then going to the Select Board to see if they agree with what the fiscal advisory and the Finance Committee have recommended. And then ultimately, it comes here for approval. Five layers of review, and you've already voted to do that today. So again, the point was, any town property that needs work of that kind is going to have far more scrutiny than one single commission. And also, there's another issue with the capacity issue. The application, excuse me, the process was made simple in terms of how to go about getting the work done by simply submitting photographs and having a two-week window because we don't have the capacity, we don't have a person to shepherd an application like that through, whereas the individual homeowner is the applicant and they are the one responsible for shepherding it through to the historic. So that was the rationale. It's going to have more review, but the process is simpler, but at the same time, it's not. I don't know if that makes sense. So that was the reason.
Thank you. Sir.
A simple detail question. David Amory, Turden Road. What do you mean by composite materials in the proposal?
Cementitious siding. It could be AZAC, any number of things.
I would encourage to, if there could be some sustainable guidelines that are followed for those materials, essentially staying away from petroleum-based or cement-based materials. There are materials out there that are sustainable, renewable, and should really become the standard practice. Thank you.
Thank you for the suggestion. We could certainly consider it if we get to that point.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on Article number 20. Voting is closed. Article passes 79 to 17. Article 21. Article 21, and I will mention now and later when it comes time to vote, will require a two-thirds vote.
I move that the town create a new local Alden Historic District and expand the existing Windsor Historic District to be administered through the Duxbury General Bylaw, Chapter 12, and to update the official local historic district map of the town of Duxbury to include the new and expanded local historic districts as follows. Alden, the Wright Building property located at 147 St. George Street, owned by the town of Duxbury, and Windsor, 645 Washington Street, owned by the town of Duxbury. Select board voted 5-0-0 to recommend. Finance committee voted 4-3-1. Motion to recommend? Okay. I had to check with the former moderator here on something.
A motion's been made and seconded. Do we have any questions or concerns about this? We have one? Please.
Mark McDevitt, Chestnut Street. Why?
I'm not the one to ask.
Seems like a reasonable question. Do we have an answer?
Pamela Smith, 243 St. George Street. I am the chairperson for the Duxbury Local Historic Commission. I've been on this commission since it was founded in 2006, so I am passionate about this. I'm a local architect, and I enjoy the historic architectural fabric of Duxbury. That's one of the reasons I moved here. I very much enjoy driving around Washington Street, and when asked if there was interest in creating a Duxbury Local Historic District Study Committee, I volunteered to be on it. And here I am today, and somebody's asked why. We are interested in preserving the exterior of historic buildings in Duxbury. Our commission has nothing to do with the interior of these buildings. So if someone is interested in purchasing an antique house, say, on Washington Street, and their intentions are to tear it down, how would you feel? So our intentions on this study, this commission, are to preserve that architecture and these gems around town. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, pretty much, but one follow-up question, if I may?
Please.
At some point down the road, we are going to need to rebuild the Bluefish River Bridge. What other staging area can you envision for all the equipment and stuff for the rebuilding of that bridge without taking advantage of the old fire station located there? And, you know, just creating a massive headache. I don't know what the implications are of this down the line, other than preserving the looks of a nice historic building, but is that enough? Thank you.
I think in some ways, it's more comment than question, but if you have an answer, feel free.
I don't have an answer to that.
The reason that the Finance Committee was torn about this is, as Pam has eloquently stated, it was a protection of residential properties and to give the community a voice in preserving the architectural integrity of historic districts. We felt that our, some of us felt, that because these are town buildings, that any work or any renovation that would be done would be brought to the community by the means of town meeting. There would be a great deal of public discourse surrounding them. It would not be an individual deciding to tear down historic property or damage it in some way. It would be the community looking at this property and making a decision based on the collective permission from the community. So it then added a layer to what would have to be done if these buildings needed to be worked on. They are both working buildings, and the concern was that because they are commercial buildings, that this could then cause a unnecessary delay in any accommodation that needed to be made. But primarily, it was felt that we had enough of a... But primarily, it was felt that we had enough of a protection through town meeting, through the permitting process, through the fact that the historic group has to review major projects because, or demolition projects, that this was an additional layer of bureaucracy that was not entirely necessary.
Seeing no other, no other, Mrs. McNeil.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to address Mr. McDevitt's comment on potential construction of the Bluefish River. My understanding of this article, staging or such that would occur in response to that construction of the Bluefish, this article wouldn't interfere with that at all. I mean, I think the parking lot could still be used. Again, I think Ms. Smith said it very well. This really protects the exterior, the look of these historic structures. So I don't think it would in any way interfere with those types of projects.
Mr. McGee.
Good afternoon. Michael McGee, Vice Chair of the Select Board, also a former member of the Duxbury Local Historic District Commission. Just to reiterate our vote as a Select Board, I think I share our continued commitment to preserving the historic nature of this community, and it goes beyond just our residential homes, and this is an opportunity as a community. It's not the first time. Attarcombe is also in a local historic district, but to preserve the historic nature of our community, our public buildings, and only the exterior. And the previous article that was passed, I believe, was in response to some of the concerns that the Finance Committee rightfully had last year and that our Buildings Director also had. So we've worked diligently to address those concerns. We appreciate your vote on the previous article and hope you will support this article as well. Thank you.
Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Robert Carpenter, I just want to take a brief moment to add some additional flavor to the debate and the discussion. The fact is that buildings constructed of old, air-dried timber, if kept dry, can last a thousand years or more. Because of the nature of old wood with the resins intact, the material hardens over time. Duxbury has a longstanding tradition of reusing structures. We put a lot of sweat equity into the buildings that have been built in this town, and we used to move them, not demolish them. This becomes harder and harder over time with the growth of utility infrastructure and the increased density of our neighborhoods. The visual architectural character of Duxbury is a defining element of our civic life, and it's worthy of protecting, and I hope that you'll support this. Thank you.
Any further comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on Article Twenty-One and remind you, it takes a two-thirds vote for this to pass. Voting is open. Motion carries seventy-two yes, twenty-two no. Article Twenty-Two. Mrs. Sullivan, can we have an Article Two?
Thank you. I was being informed of the birthday wishes to be conveyed to the Chair of the Fiscal Advisory. It is his special day. We'll call that Article Twenty-One A. I move that the town authorize the Town Clerk of Duxbury to forward the text of this article to Governor Mor Healy, the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Rebecca Tepper, and the Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection, Bonnie Hempel, and the Secretary of Health and Human Services, Kate Walsh, the Commissioner of the Department of Health, Dr. Robert Goldstein, and the Town of Duxbury's congressional and state delegations, as printed in the warrant. This article was supported by the Select Board and the Finance Committee unanimously.
Second.
Yes, I'm speaking with Becky Chin, who should be acknowledged today too for being This Article Twenty-Two asks the support of off-site storage of spent nuclear fuel. That should be evident of why it's important to us. Pilgrim Nuclear Power Plant is approximately six miles from where we're sitting today. It used nuclear fuel to generate its heat, and since it started operating in 1972 until it stopped operating in 2019, they generated over 4,000 spent fuel assemblies. Yes, up on the slide one, you can see how these assemblies are being stored on-site because there is no place off-site to store them, and that's why we want to put pressure on our state and federal regulators to start giving this the attention that it deserves. Each spent fuel cask, about eighteen feet tall on your right, is surrounded by a concrete overpack, which, and inside, there is a stainless steel canister that holds sixty-eight nuclear fuel assemblies. That canister is only a half-inch thick, about the size of your coffee mug. It is clearly not designed for long-term storage, nor is it designed to resist terrorist attack. Between the stainless steel canister and the dry cask, there is a open channel to allow air to circulate continuously against the canister to dissipate excess heat. That also allows salt air to constantly be in contact with the stainless steel, and salt is very corrosive. Each cask, and there are sixty-two sitting at Pilgrim today with no place to go, those six, each one has a third to one-half cesium-137 released at Chernobyl, which is a considerable amount of radiation. If, God forbid, it were successfully attacked, let's say, nobody would be living here nor in the area for a long, long time. So that's why it's important that stuff like this doesn't stay here. There is currently no technology to fully inspect or to repair or to replace a failing, cracked cask. And so why have it in our neighborhood? Obviously, when all this was planned, it was not planned to keep this material on-site. First, it was going to be reprocessed, but that was banned by President Carter because he recognized there was too much nuclear bomb material in the world. Then, there was going to be some state that would raise their hand and volunteer enthusiastically to have all the spent fuel in the nation from the 70-some reactors be in their state. So far, nobody has volunteered. So what's the problem? Why aren't, what's the problem with it here? There are two problems. One is security. And we'll thank Karen Wong for that wonderful picture of the cask on Rocky Hill Road in Plymouth. As you can see, they're on a hill. They're 362 feet from a public road, totally visible. They have a chain-link fence around them. That's it. They do have guards and a security, small security building, but there are clearly people, enemies of our country, who are fully capable to get weapons needed that are available on the Internet to do severe damage. Clearly, that's a problem. I learned, and obviously some others haven't, since 9/11, that you should not underestimate the capability of enemies of our country. Therefore, it is not acceptable to have this material to be so vulnerable. In Europe, for example, they seem to have learned lessons from 9/11. They learned from Chernobyl, and they are keeping their spent fuel that has to be stored in the interim on-site in reinforced, monitored buildings with guards. But we are not doing that. The second problem is corrosion and leakage with no capability to repair. There is no, it makes no sense to store this material in very thin steel casks in a marine environment. Therefore, it's well beyond time for our government to take action, to be continually impressed. It is important for the security of our country, the safety of our citizens, that this be given the attention it deserves, and fully appreciate the Town of Duxbury, the support that has been given so we can be an example, which we have been year after year, to the state and to other communities. Thank you, and I'm sure Becky Chin, which is her day too, will have something to say.
Pixie actually said as much, a lot that I would like to say, but I would like to remind you that the DOE, the Department of Energy, promised almost 50 years ago to take care of our spent fuel, and they have failed miserably in that promise to develop a permanent storage facilities for spent nuclear fuel. So less than six miles down our coastline is a spent fuel dump, and we would like to have you support Article Twenty-Two because it's the best we can do at this point. Thank you.
Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on Article Twenty-Two. Voting is closed. Article passes ninety-four to three. Article Twenty-Three, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town accept as a public way the roadway known as Cooper Hill Road as heretofore laid out by the Select Board and shown on a plan of land entitled "As-Built Plan for Cooper Hill Road in Duxbury, Massachusetts," dated December 28, 2022, prepared by Southshore Survey Consultants, Inc., and on file with the Town Clerk, and to authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain the fee to and/or easements in Cooper Hill Road for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Duxbury, and any drainage access utility and/or other easements related thereto. The Select Board and the Finance Committee voted unanimously to support.
Are there any questions? So hearing no questions or concerns from people, I'm going to call for a vote. This takes a two-thirds vote. So voting is now open on the proposal to accept Cooper Hill Road as a townway. Voting is closed. Article passes seventy-eight to fourteen. Mrs. Sullivan, Article Number Twenty-Four, the proposed relocation of the layout of Washington Street.
I move that the town accept as a public way the relocated layout of Washington Street as heretofore relocated and laid out by the Select Board and known on a plan entitled "Relocation Right-of-Way Plan, Washington Street, Duxbury, Massachusetts," dated August 18, 2023, and prepared by Mural Engineers and Land Surveyors, eighteen sheets, and also on file with the Town Clerk, and to authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain the fee to and/or easements in Washington Street for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Duxbury, and any drainage access utility and/or other easements related thereto. Recommendations, Select Board was five zero zero, Finance Committee five zero one, to recommend.
I don't see anybody running to the microphones. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article Twenty-Four. It does take a two-thirds vote to pass. Voting is closed. Article passes eighty to fourteen. I think it's the next, I think the next seven articles are all related to CPC, and as in the past, there'll be a brief presentation to start, to talk about CPC and give you some information that really encompasses the next six articles that you'll be dealing with. So while we will be taking individual votes on the next articles, this really speaks to everything that we will be dealing with. Thank you.
Did you want me to read the article, John, or wait?
I think we'll, I think we'll wait.
Okay.
And let, let the information out, and then we'll start the article.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Robert Carpenter, Summertime, Vice Chair of CPC. I'm going to show out at presenting this one, so I appreciate your preparedness. We have our chart here, which provides you an overview of the state matching funds in yellow. The surcharge amount driven by, sorry, yeah, I'm trying to.
If you're going to turn around, just pick up the microphone.
Oh, I can do it. Good idea. Thank you. Boy, it's like Vegas. All right. So the surcharge amount, you can see in FY13, it was reduced from 3% to 1%. The state match was still high at that point because it was based on the prior year's receipts. So FY14, '15, there it went down, and recently, as you see in the end, 25, fiscal year 25, those are estimates, 3%, and we anticipate a match. We'll go through the exact figures. We adopted CPC in 2002. In the first 10 years, we received nearly $19 million in local and state matching funds, and we acquired 700 And we acquired 700 acres of open space, funded affordable housing, restored buildings such as the Wright Building, Old Town Hall, and King Caesar House. Developed Keene Street playing fields, funded work for turf fields, and did not borrow any funds. With the reduced surcharge, our receipts declined by nearly $9 million, and we lost access to $2.4 million in state matching funds. Since that time, the town continued to acquire 400 acres of open space, funded additional housing, historic properties such as the Duxbury Library, the Miles Sanders Cemetery, preserved historic documents, installed ball field dugouts, built pickleball courts and tennis courts, contributed to the Laney Lad Playground, protected the Simmons Farm from a sizable development, and acquired land for groundwater protection and recreation. However, due to the reduction in the surcharge, we, in order to achieve these goals, we had to borrow money, and this incurred $2.7 million in debt, drawing down our reserves. And you can see this by the green bar for the appropriations representing expenditures, some of those in later years supported by debt. In 2023, 59% of the voters approved the return to a 3% surcharge, which increases our entitlement to multiple rounds of state matching fund. The estimated revenue from the local surcharge for FY25 is $1.9 million, and the state matching funds are estimated Next slide. There were $29.7 million in expenditures overall, life of the program, and approximately a third of that is matching funds. 18% on historic preservation, 67% for open space, 11% for housing, which has additional support, and 4% for recreation. We're going to then show some of the specific projects that I mentioned earlier. Go to the next one. We have, as you can see here, over 60 projects. Plenty of matching funds, a total of over 1,000 acres for conservation, protecting our drinking water, wetlands, streams, farmland, scenic vistas, and forests. Of the 18% of historic preservation funds, 85% has been spent on town-owned properties, removing this burden from the town's general fund. And the 11% spent on housing programs, as mentioned, was also supported by other sources. The recreation expenditures supported purchase of land, playing fields, playgrounds, and then courts, as mentioned. To wrap up the summary, the FY25 estimated revenues and expenses, as you can see here, we anticipate almost $2 million in receipts, $850,000 in matching funds. There are required allocations, this is in the State Statute, 5% for administrative expenses. As you can see, the 10% allocations for open space, historic preservation, and housing, the three reserve purposes totaling $841,000. We are going to expend $237,000 in debt service for the various bond issues. And we've already voted to spend the $600,000 in extinguishing Ricker Farm, yet only $1,500, which came from CPC. The rest was mostly proceeds of sale. This will, we believe, leave us at an undesignated fund balance of $1.7 million. That's the initial presentation. We can now move on to the articles.
Would you like me to read the article now, John? Okay. I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriate the sum of $377,855 from the Community Preservation Act Fund FY2025 anticipated revenues for the purpose of meeting the requirements of the Community Preservation Act in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, for the administrative expenses and charges for operation in the amount of $140,230 and for debt service in the amount of $237,625 for the Community Preservation Committee, all for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025 inclusive.
Second.
Select Board and Finance Committee unanimously supported.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on Article 25. We do have one. No problem.
Lester Lloyd, 21, Washington Street. So the good news is that if this passes and the 600, or if the later piece for the Ricker Farm, or the Farm piece of 600,000 passes, then the debt service will be reduced by a large amount. Is that correct?
Yes, we passed the 600,000 extinguishment this morning for Ricker, so that's taken care of. And as I understand it, and Mary may have more detail, but the other debt that has been incurred is bundled with additional municipal obligations and therefore cannot be immediately extinguished. So we will continue to have debt payments against CPC for several years to come. I believe it's in the amount of $180,000 to $200,000 a year.
So that is to say, less than the, is that 237?
Yes, it will decrease.
Next one.
Any other, any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote on Article 25, CPC Operating Fund. Voting is closed. Article 25 passes 80 yes, 6 no. Article 26?
I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriate the sum of $841,380 from the Community Preservation Act Fund FY2025 anticipated revenues for the purpose of meeting the requirements of the Community Preservation Act, Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 6, with $280,460 of set amount reserved for open space, $280,460 of set amount reserved for community housing, and $280,460 of set amount reserved for historical resources. Recommendations from Select Board and Finance Committee were unanimously to approve.
Second.
And we have a second. Motion's been made and seconded. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on Article 27.
27.
I'm sorry. I'm moving to the next one. I'm anxious, I guess. 26. Article 26, CPC allocations. Voting is closed. Article 26 passes 78 to 3. I guess we'll try 27 now.
I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, transfer from available funds the sum of $75,000 from Community Preservation Fund Open Space Reserve to the Conservation Fund. Such funds to be expended under the direction of the Conservation Commission for any purpose authorized by General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C, and General Law, Chapter 44B. Recommendations were Select Board and Finance Committee voted unanimously to support.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any, any questions? I'll ask for a vote on Article 27 then, Voting is closed. Article passes 79, yes to no. Article 28?
I move to indefinitely postpone this article.
Second.
Select Board and Finance Committee voted unanimously to support.
Any questions or concerns?
There was not adequate information to support the request.
Can I have a name that goes with the question?
Ladies and gentlemen, the satellite.
Did you get that? Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote to indefinitely postpone Article 28. Voting is closed. Article passes 76 to 5. Article 29, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, vote to appropriate the sum of $25,000 from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve to rehabilitate and preserve the town clock at Pilgrim Congregational Church, including all incidental and related expenses. Such funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager. Recommendations, well, I know the Finance Committee voted to unanimously support.
And did the Select Board this morning.
And the Select Board did as well. Fiscal Advisory, I'm getting a big thumbs up, so we're good.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any second, anybody have a question or concern? Mr. McDivitt, please.
Mark McDevitt, Summer Street. Just to clarify, is this town property or is it property, private property owned by the church?
The clock was, is in the church steeple, and it was donated to the town in 1905, at which point town meeting accepted the gift. So we own it.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on Article 29, Rehabilitation and Preservation of the Town Clock at Pilgrim Congregational Church. Voting is closed. Article passes 81 to 7. Article number 30, Mrs. Sullivan, please.
I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, transfer the sum of $250,000 from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance to the Community Preservation Affordable Housing Reserve. The Select Board and the Finance Committee unanimously voted to support.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote on Article number 30, Housing Trust Fund Transfer. Voting is closed. Article passes 79 to 5. Article 31, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriate the sum of $30,000 from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve for technical assistance in the drafting of the open space and recreational plan, including all incidental and related expenses. Such funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager. Select Board, Finance Committee, and Fiscal Advisory all unanimously support.
Second. Any questions?
Yes. Hi, over here.
Thank you.
Hi, Colleen Brer, Toby Garden Street. I don't know if there's a plan that exists. I haven't seen it. But is there anyone can answer? Are we doing anything about creating a dog park? I would love a dog park. It gets difficult to, you know, a lot of the town forests and everywhere, there's so many people out there, and there's, the beach gets closed down to dogs for a period of time. And that would be very, a lot of other towns in the area have them, but we don't have access to them. So I didn't know if anyone could respond to that, please.
That was not part of our deliberation.
But is there anyone on the committee? I mean, who's responsible for that? And who do we speak to or go to meetings for to see if we can get that done?
This would be under conservation, I believe, My suggestion would be, if you have an interest, you could drop an application off to the CPC and.
Well, I fill out the survey all the time. They say I want a dog park.
Pardon? I'm sorry?
Whenever they have surveys, I'm saying.
Oh, yeah. I've heard nothing of having a dog park here in Duxbury.
Open Space Committee?
Yeah. I know that we allow them on some trails. We ask everybody to pick up after them. I mutts and the town goes out and collects the refuse from those. And I know there are neighboring communities that do allow them.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand anything you just said. I have hard hearing.
The town does allow dogs in some areas.
Oh, yes.
We have a leash law. We provide mutts, the DPW picks them up. But we have no, no plans that I'm aware of for a dog park in town.
So open space is the place to start.
Mrs. Sullivan, the final article of this meeting, Article 32.
We didn't vote 31. We ought to vote 31.
All right.
It's in a hurry.
Do you have a question?
The dog park threw you a little.
Susan Curtis, High Street. I just wanted to quickly speak to the dog park. This has come up over and over, over the years. Eddie has been asked that question. I've been asked that question. I personally am no fan of dog parks because it's total bedlam and psychosis, for the most part. And so since we have such, so much open space and our dogs are allowed to run off leashes as long as they're under your strict control, that's the best possible scenario for your dogs. And if anybody needs their dog to be exercised, you can call me at the Duxbury Animal Shelter. I have a puppy who is an insane little puppy, and he'll wipe your dog out.
Okay. Oh, somebody else. John, do you see this gentleman?
Next one? All right. So let's have a vote. Article 31. I'm calling for a vote on Article 31. Voting is now closed. Passes 79 to 6. Article 32, Mrs. Sullivan.
Okay. I move that the town rescind the action taken by the voters on Article 16 of the March 11. March eleventh, two thousand twenty-three annual town meeting, and officially disband the Climate Action Planning Task Force as printed in the warrant. Select Board and Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I believe we have a question.
Well, just a comment. One of those starting at eighty-five Bay Ridge Lane, Chair of the Alternative Energy Committee, which proposed this article last year. Just to give the background there, the intention was that the town recognized the importance of creating a community, a climate action plan, bring us in line with state and federal goals to reach net zero by two thousand and fifty. This would bring us in line with other communities that have already done so, and many of which have created task force and created paid positions to make sure that the climate action plan is part of all decisions made by the town. So that was our intention. And the citizens agreed, voted to accept the article. So days grow into weeks, grow into months, and nothing is happening. We quickly realized on the AEC that the town was not going to be picked up for one reason or another. So we went to the Select Board and explained that there are obstacles here, what's the intention. It became obvious to us that the lane was not going to be open to create this task force, which was going to be made up of members of the community, department heads, et cetera, be able to cut through all levels of the town. So not letting it go bye-bye, we decided the AEC will take on the responsibility to create this plan. The town has to realize that this is an advisory and volunteer group with no budget and no direct access except through phone calls, et cetera, to people who make decisions in the town regarding energy use. But we're willing to take that on. You have to realize that there are some obstacles here. One, we started to create a relationship with the former planning director. We don't have that person. We had a relationship with the utilities, facilities manager, and that person is now gone. So there are a lot of challenges here, but just want to let the town know that the Alternative Energy Committee, we're not giving up. We understand that the town needs this, and we're going to continue to work on this. Right now, we're doing a greenhouse gas emission survey, you know, which we're carrying on, but we hope that in the future, when there's something needed as far as information, et cetera, that we are able to go to the town and get cooperation on that. I do have to say right here, there are groups that have, you know, assisted us, including the task force, the Coastal Resiliency Task Force. So that's happening. But again, the AEC felt that if we don't do this, no one else is going to. So there we are.
Thank you.
David Amory, Purdon Road, on the Coastal Resiliency Task Force. Wendell, thank you. I think it's important as we, as we as a task force, think about the challenges that lie ahead, we need to be doing this in full coordination with the efforts of the Alternative Energy Committee and any other sustainable, climate-oriented organizations in town, Sustainable Duxbury, et cetera. And we do need to get a better sense of just how committed the town is to these efforts. To be very honest, it feels like we're pushing rope, and we really need to get back on board, get on board, to see that we can move forward in a productive way, a proactive way, as we move forward with the great challenges lying ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we vote? All right, I'll call for a vote on Article thirty-two to rescind Article sixteen from the March twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting. Voting is open. Motion passes seventy-eight to eight, and that completes the business in the warrant for the annual town meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Sunny, die.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it unanimous.